Mike, 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 Mike. Mike, 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 Mike.
Welcome to another episode of Mike's on Mike. I'm Mike Miller. We're here, of course, with Mike Talbert, Mike Hightower, and we're here to talk about local politics and city government. There really hasn't been too many programs on as of late that really just focus on that particular issue. But we felt that it was time to do it with the new mayor, many new city council members, lots of changes going on on the administration side of the fourth floor, as well as the third floor for that matter. And we thought it would be great to come on with the three of us, since we all have very amount of experience in this, to talk about this each week and talk about some of the people who are making the news for that week. So with that, let's go on. And one of the things that we didn't get to do too much last week when we did our first program is to talk about who we are and our backgrounds. And Mike Talbert, you kind of came in through the rear, so I want to put you up on the front.
No, I came, I came in from the front. I don't know where you got that nonsense.
It's in my notes right here.
Since we're going to be talking about the city council and the mayor right now and their relationship in this program. You know, I covered the first city council consolidation in 1969. I came here as a political reporter right after consolidation. So I grew up with those nineteen people, and I learned an awful lot. And I guess in one way or another, I have been associated with most of the city councils since then and members of the city council. So it's going to be fun to try to figure this new group out. And I'm looking forward to just talking to you guys about that.
Yeah. Can I ask you a question about that? And with so many years of experience, is there any particular city council member, going back to 1968, that really stands out to you and says, boy, that person was just above and beyond what the norm was?
Well, if I, you know, I keep going back to sixty-nine, maybe because that's
First year.
First year, what I know most, I know best, really. And you had, you had a lot of them. They were there for a different reason. Some of them there because they had, they wanted to play politics, and they wanted to move on through the politics, Jake being one, Limwood Roberts being another, and there were others. But you had some really community giants on that, on that council. And I am Sulzberger
Exactly.
was probably the smartest guy on that council. He was arrogant as he could be. He looked down at people like Jake and Limwood and Johnny Sanders and some of those folks, and they enjoyed playing with him. It was kind of fun to watch.
Is that where you got your stuff from?
Not, not really. And you know, John Lanahan was on that council. And John Lanahan was a strong individual. He and I didn't get along so good sometimes. And I can, I can remember one day when I was working as an aide to Mayor Tansler, and I hear this loud boisterous voice, and it's, and it's, where is Talbert? Where is that damn Talbert? I know he did this. He comes in and cusses me out, which he was good at. But I thought Ted Grissette was the first city council president. He was a lawyer. Brilliant. That was just a class A bunch of folks. Mary Singleton was on that group. Earl Johnson was in that group.
Sally Mathis?
Sally Mathis was in that group. One of the, one of the members, Oscar Taylor, as I recall, got indicted, which was one of the few times anybody has gotten indicted as a member of the city council. I think there've been a couple of others, but it's very rare.
Let's, let's go into the current city council then. We have ten new members.
Ten.
Correct. The makeup of the city council is a lot different than it was in the past. We only have two women serving on the council this, this term. Six African Americans, and I believe two or three other people of color. How is this council going to deal with our new mayor?
For the first month, probably will. And then all bets will probably be off after that, would be my guess. We don't know. It's so much unknown, ten new members. And we, we don't know about some of the returning people either. For instance, let's speculate that some of them, maybe one, two, or three, kind of did whatever Mayor Curry wanted them to do during that, during their first four years up there. Will they do what Mayor Deegan wants them to do? I don't know. We'll see. Or will they cooperate or whatever?
Yeah, and I think that Mike makes a good point, because I think you've got a lot of, well, they've got, when you look at the numbers, there's only five Democrats. So I think the Republicans, as they talk about a super majority. On the other hand, a lot of them are very political. They're going to say she came in with over nine thousand votes. I mean, I, I think Mike's right. That first, that first couple of months, the big issue There'll be a honeymoon, but the big issue is what's going to happen on the budget. That's going to be the Finance Committee. And then the big, and then the big thing is Rules Committee, which are her appointments. So I think where Mike says, I think the first month or two is going to be critical to see, are we going to go back? Are these people going to be Republican City Council, Democratic City Council? Are they going to be Jacksonville City Council members?
And you know, you've got, people who watch this stuff talk about the relationship between Donna and Ron Salem, the council president, and it goes back years. However, I don't know how far that will go either. Ron's his own person, as you well know. And in looking at some of the committee assignments that he made, first of all, it looks like he took veteran members of the council and made them chairs, and then filled in with a lot of the new people. But he put Howland as Chair of Finance, who's a red meat kind of guy. And he put Terrence Freeman in as Chair of Rules. And Terrence is a holdover. He was past president of the council. I don't, I don't, I think that was intentional on the council presidents.
Oh, very definitely.
Yeah, I think it was intentional, because that's the two things that control. Finance is the budget. Rules is the appointments.
Right.
And Randy White, the Vice Chair of the Council, Vice President, or whatever the council, is now Vice Chair of both of those committees.
It was one other thing that I learned when I was doing liaison work for Delaney, and that is that the Rules Committee Chair often becomes the most important person on that council, because that person decides where that bill is going to be heard, or if it's going to be heard.
If it's going to be heard.
Exactly.
I mean, we had a number of issues that the city council did not like. And I remember that the Rules Committee Chair, when I was there, was Pat Lockett Felder. And boy, if she didn't like something that we had proposed on the other side of the fourth floor, she would put it on every committee she could put it on, just to slow it down, or if not, stop it completely. So there's, there's some really interesting strategic maneuvering that can be done by the Rules Department, by the Rules Committee, rather, before it gets to the other committees.
No question about it. And I think that's some things that need to be watched is, is, let's go to the elephant in the room. I don't think there's any question that Consultant Tim Baker, the black hat of politics, has a lot of influence on Terrence Freeman. And I, and I think that's been made pretty obvious. So we'll see what happens there.
It's, Terrence is not the only one. And you also got to see is the people you have just mentioned. These were all people who were very loyal to Lenny Curry, and Lenny Curry and the consultant was very loyal to Daniel Davis. And so, you know, when you talk about the elephant in the room, there's a couple of these elephants.
There's a couple of them. In fact, you know, it's interesting going back, going back to Randy. For those who don't know, Randy is a retired firefighter. He was head of the Fire Union, a great guy, very kind of soft spoken and quiet. He lived across the street, or Daniel Davis lived across the street from him for twenty years, until he moved to Ortega.
Yeah.
And, and they, they were running buddies. They're part of that West Side mafia. That's a bad word to use, but people on the West Side are so close. I mean, they're, they're generations.
Well, they refer to that.
Yeah, they're generations. And so it's going to be interesting to see what, how Randy comes through all this.
Well, but don't lose sight of the fact that in her budget address, the mayor also went ahead and added sixty new positions that are going to go to fire and rescue.
Yeah.
So I'm sure that was a nod and a tip of the hat to Randy.
I don't know if you saw Nate's column either.
I have, no, yes, I did see.
I mean, his Twitter, his Twitter, Twitter thing, somebody sent it to me.
Let me, I sent it to you, but let me, let me read that if I may, okay? I bought it today. And please remember, this is now Nate Monroe, who is saying this, not me. And this goes back to the, this goes back to the campaign when Sheriff Waters had said that, that Donna Deegan was going to defund the police department.
And be dangerous.
And be dangerous to the police department personnel, as well as to the rest of the city, as he put it.
Said more than that.
This is what Nate wrote. Jacksonville's defund mayor just proposed a five hundred and seventy-eight million dollar budget for the sheriff's office, which is its largest ever, including money for forty new police immediately. And also, which by the way absorbs the forty existing ones that were paid for out of federal money, which now have to be paid for if we're going to keep them by city money, and she's going to do that, and also includes a four and a quarter percent increase in salaries.
Yeah.
So that was, that was her response, I think, to the criticism that she's going to be soft on crime.
Well, and she never said she was going to be soft on crime.
No, no.
She never, that was, you know, that was one of those labels they put on her. I think, you know, just, it's, it's so early yet. But I think between her address when she was installed and her budget message yesterday, and what she's laid out in that budget, she's, she's being very consistent. And I'm, it's obvious, it looks like it's obvious, that she's talking to a lot of people already on that council. I've heard that, that she and Salem go back and forth from the city council president's office to the mayor's office and a meeting with people. She's going down on, on that floor. She's meeting with them there. And I understand they're going to do a lot of that. She's, she's not afraid to go down there.
I remember even Delaney in my situation, when, when there was somebody like a Jerry Holland or somebody like that, who held good positions in the council, wanted to talk to the mayor. The mayor would ask me, being his liaison, do I, should I go to their office, or do you want them to come to my office? And it depended on what the issue was. But there were times, and all of a sudden, you know, you would see the executive assistants to the city council members just light up when all of a sudden that door opened, that back door that connects the two offices opens up, and here comes the mayor just walking through casually towards the
I think that, you know, and one of the other things that's going on here, and we talked about this last week, you know, when she talked about that politics are in her DNA, she has been here her whole life. A lot of people have underestimated Donna Deegan. They underestimated, underestimated her during the campaign, to the point of, you know, she, she met with everybody. She went, everyone went there. She has thought about this. She had a tough campaign. She won. I, I, I get the politics of the, you know, the consultant, the influence and all that. But let me tell you, she worked hard to be mayor. She got there, and she knows what her priorities are. And she's going to work it. I think you're going to see, just like she did during the campaign, she's going to meet with them every time. And I think she's going to remind them that, as she said, what was the quote? She said, "We will lift as we climb." Count, count to make a commitment to fix what's broken. If she just continues to remind them, you know, we're going to do this together. It's not about me. It's not about you. It's about us, and it's about making Jacksonville better. Let me tell you, she is one shrewd individual, and she's, people who underestimate her go there at her, at their own risk.
And, and don't forget that every one of those projects, whether it be a sinkhole or just a pothole, it's in somebody's district.
Oh, yeah.
And that person's district needs that to be done in order to help their character.
That's how you play the game. Going back, going back to that first city council, Al Cannard was the Deputy Public Works Director. And hands, Mayor Tansler took a pretty much of a hands-off approach to a lot of things. And so when council members had issues in their districts, they didn't call the mayor. They called the Deputy Public Works Director, Al Cannard, who then took care of the problem. And then all of a sudden, what that meant was that the mayor didn't have a chit, Al Cannard had it.
Right.
And Al Cannard was amassing a tremendous amount of pressure as a Deputy Public Works Director, and he later became the Public Works Director. But you, you can use that, you can use the ability to do things in those districts that help you down the road politically, help you get votes. And if you don't, if they don't cooperate, you can also withhold that stuff. I don't think she'll do that. I don't think that's in her DNA either. I don't think she'll do that.
No. And, you know, just sidelined when Mayor Austin, when he became mayor, you know, he, his rule was he had Rule One, Two, and Three. Rule Three was call Al Cannard. Cannard made it work, because that's how it is. Now, he's, she's got, I'm drawing a blank, her, her CAO. Why am I drawing a blank?
Karen Bowlen.
Karen Bowlen, who's been there before. So she's got a great team. But it's, like you said, it's what's going to happen with how they review the budget, and it's going to be what happens in rules. The other thing that, and I, and again, you've got a lot of independent city councils. You've got a lot of people who are very loyal to Curry. Curry was very loyal to Davis. But on the other hand is, she's got two constituencies. She's got unbelievable across the community. And the other thing is, as we've heard, or I've heard, and I know you guys have heard the same thing, is that she has been meeting with the business community. And, and remember, when she talked about why she won, what was the difference between her campaign and Davis's campaign? And the criticism that came out of the business community was that his campaign was so negative, and they, and a lot of people may have given money to Davis, but they supported her. You can tell that by the vote, is you've got all these dynamics.
Well, you know, one thing she has going for her, let's talk about Scott Wilson for a minute. I mean, Scott is her council liaison, which, as you know, Mike, is a critical position in government. Yeah, it's a critical position. And Scott was on that city council. He knows how the system works. As council president, when he stood up to the JEA, he made an awful lot of friends that, that didn't know him at all hardly. And, and as they watched him grow and watched him operate on that council, he impressed, continued to impress them. They're now his friends. And these are people that have influence in a lot of places, including members of that city council. These are people who gave money to some of those people. And I think one of the things that Scott is probably going to do, I hope he will, is use that opportunity, use that influence he has now, use that, that relationship he has to influence, get his friends to talk and meet with some of these council members that may want to give him a hard time. And I think he'll do that, because he's got a great resource there.
Well, and then when you add to that, you've got Anna Boucher coming in in October, who's going to be the CFO. She was also the council president. If you remember, she is the first one that stood up to Curry on the sale of JEA. So she brings that with her. You've got Garrett Dennison, Dennis, who's there. And you've got Al Farrel, if he gets there on this issue. So you, she's going to have people who are on the council, but they in themselves, as Mike says, they have their contacts. And so when you take those four or five council members who are now a part of her team, how you leverage that, and then you've got the donors, and you've got the business committee. To your point, she's got, what, at least two city council presidents, and they know how to leverage.
Who are going to be the new stars on this council?
That was going to be my next question. Thank you very much for asking it for me. Because we know that the power lies there, obviously, with the president and vice president. So, you know, Salem and White are going to be wielding the position.
I think we got it divided into two pieces. I think we have to do it, let's do it into two areas. One, the first four years, and then the second four years, because I think
You're an optimist.
Well, nobody runs to be mayor for four years.
No.
And when you look at the number of council members who will be termed out in the, in this first four years, and then the ones that are left. So I think you have the ones that, by virtue of where they are now and what they're going to try to do during the time of her first four years. And then you've got a group, to Mike's point, I think you've got some real stars coming up in that second time. So I think there's two issues.
Well, let's talk about the new ones.
Okay.
Let's talk about the new ones. And I, I keep hearing a lot about Chris Miller.
I, Chris Miller is a rock star. Retired Lieutenant Colonel. As you know, he was the local representative for Congressman Rutherford. But I can tell you, in the business community, but in the veterans community, and he, remember, he ran a very, very positive campaign during this time. As a matter of fact, is, I just happened to have the thing. Donna, Donna won with a hundred and thirteen thousand, two hundred and twenty-six votes. He won, he had a hundred and twelve, six forty-one. He ran a positive campaign. She ran a campaign. She was a Democrat. He was a Republican. I tell you, that's one of the real stars. The other one is young Willie Don. And I happen to know from that, because he is, I met him when I got appointed to the Naval Academy Board. He's a Naval Academy graduate. I can tell you, having been there for almost four years, there, it's in their DNA, service above self. Those are going to be your two-year rock stars.
It's going to be interesting to see if they wait. Growing up in the military like they have, you follow leadership. And it's going to be interesting to see how long they'll follow leadership until they become a leader on their own and maybe walk off a little bit, get a little distance.
Yeah, and then the, the other two, I think, that are going to figure out where they're, there's a lot of them are going to have to figure their way. But Mike Gay, let me tell you, he is, he is strong as new rope. And we were talking about the, the consultant. That consultant and the Davis campaign and the Curry administration, they threw everything they could at him, and he still won. So there, and then you've got young Joe Carlici, you know, who comes from a long family. He's got his dad there in his last four years, but he's got, he, let me tell you, young Joe Carlici is the spitting image of his grandfather.
Yeah, that's what scares me.
Let me tell you, but Joe got things done.
Not really.
Joe got things done. Yeah, I don't know. I saw him in Tallahassee. He was great for me. That's all I care about.
Yeah, okay, I understand. But when he was on the city council
That's the end of that conversation.
Hey, you know.
But when he was on the city council, if there was anything that came up for a vote, he'd vote, he'd vote no. Didn't matter what it was. And I can tell you, as a young reporter, I loved him, because he always, there was news there.
I was going to say, there's ink there, isn't it?
And he had a file cabinet. He had a big file cabinet, and he kept, this is for the internet. He kept files on everybody. And there were times when the mayor would make an appointment to somebody, to an authority, and I'd get a late night call from Joe and said, well, you want me to read you what's in my file about this new appointee? And it, and it became a story, and it'd be somebody that didn't get approved. He was, he was good at that. I hear that Joe is a lot more conservative than his father, Matt. Matt is one of these guys who has, over the last several years, risen to the top. I mean, he is, he's one who seems to vote and act more out of conscience than politics, in a lot of ways. And it's going to be, and he's
His endorsement of Donna Deegan was certainly
Early on.
Yeah.
Very early on.
Very early on. And, and, but it's going to be interesting to see if young Joe operates like his dad, more like his dad, or more like his grandfather. And I think he's probably going to operate more like his grandfather.
Let's, let's talk about what's going to be coming down the road. This city council with ten new ones out of nineteen are going to be looking at some pretty high-ticket priced projects. Which one is it going to be the most difficult? Is it going to be the stadium? Is it going to be the jail? What is going to be the most difficult and the most contentious issue that's got to be addressed, but is going to not be sailing through with a nineteen to nothing goal?
It's going to sound crazy, but probably the jail. And, and I say that because I think that Shad Khan and the Jaguars have got enough momentum going. They've done it the right way this time, so far. It's a big ask, and I don't think necessarily it's going to end up at that top level, but it's going to end up somewhere, because there are people who care about that football team, and they understand how important it is to this city now. A lot of them do. Many people do. The jail, on the other hand, is something out of sight, out of mind. And when we first built the new jail, where it is now, there was a movement back then to move it away from downtown, to move it away from the riverfront.
Right.
But courthouse was there, and all the lawyers and all the sheriff's people said, no, we got to keep it, we got to keep it close to the courthouse. And the sheriff, you know, would say, yeah, and if we move it, we're under risk of people escaping while we're trying to get them back and forth to court. Well, the courthouse is not there anymore. It's, it's, it's on another part of town. It's downtown. But you're going to have that fight. That's going to be a fight, I think, before it's over with. And it's, that makes no sense to have the jail down there, in my opinion, and the sheriff's department down there. They ought to both be moved.
Exactly. And it's where, it's the big ticket. I think when you look at what her priorities are, when she's talking about the things that need to be fixed, the infrastructure, the part of the community, which is the West Side, North Side, that where she's talked about. You talk about the Jaguars. And then you also, we still got, we had to change the benefits on the fire and police pension. These are big issues. I, I think the jail is going to be one of those things where you're going to see the sheriff and Ron Salem push it, because that's their big issue. But when you take all of that and put it on the table, now, right now, we have a flush, we're flushed with a little bit of money. But when you look at the Jaguars, her budget, the jail's going to be, I think the jail will be a fight, because I don't think there's, for the people within a cer- circle, the jail's important. But to the full community, I think the Jaguars have more pull.
I think they do too. But you know, and we'll be getting into these in, in other episodes, so stand by. We're not going to try to put all of it into this one thirty-minute set. But what I'm starting to hear on the street, which is kind of interesting, is people are supportive of going ahead and doing the stadium. What they're having issues with is all that other surrounding infrastructure that Shad Khan wants to do in support of that stadium, and that's where some people I've talked to say, hold on, timeout. The stadium is one thing, but why should I be paying my tax dollars to go towards things that are really not Jaguars directly connected to?
And they may end up resolving that, resolving to delay that, make that to second phase.
I think they're going to make it two phases.
I think, I think they probably will. I would think they would. I don't know if they will, but that's what I would do.
Yeah.
And, 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 and right now, the football team, you know, looks like it's got it going right.
Well, we're winning. That helps.
Yeah. And, and, and so that's always the best thing, you know, if you're trying to do something. So if they can put it in phase two, keep, get the stadium done, keep winning some football games, then they'll get that second.
Then they'll get the second part. I agree. I agree. I think that's probably the best thing.
And, and, you know, and as, Mike, as you've said, you know, Shad and Mark Lamping are now on the forefront. They're out there talking to the community. Donna is out there talking to the community. And transparency is really what our community is all about. If you, not just for me, but that's what they were saying was not there. The last eight years was transparency. So you have people who have big issues, big items, big ticket items, and they're out there talking to the folks.
Well, the Jaguars learned a big lesson on Lot J.
They sure did.
They learned a big lesson, and they reversed that, and it's, and it's already paid off for them. And they, they've been going, you know, they, they went out on the stadium, but they went out before that.
Exactly.
And then they found that, though, that does work.
Yeah. And the other thing is Jacksonville's a small town, and you've got, you know, they, they want to hear from the people. If you're asking for money, I want to hear what's in it for me, what's it going to cost me down the road. And it's not, and those are not, and those are not unimportant questions. And if you will take the time, one, to respect the person that pays for it, and if you will respect them to hear their point of view, everybody understands that you're not always going to agree. But at least let me have my say.
Well, Lamping and Khan appear to be pretty good at it, on their, good on their feet and good with people.
Yeah.
I mean, they seem to be, especially Lamping. I mean, he's, he's delightful to be around.
He is, and he's great. And he's, you know, all you got to do is spend a little bit of time for him. He's, he's very forthcoming, and he's, he's got a great reputation, by the way.
Let's go back to the city council and the mayor. We can talk about football some other time.
Hey, listen, we're winning, guys. It's, it's, it's so refreshing.
You know, one of the, one of the new council members that, that intrigues me is Rockman Johnson. I've known him since he was a kid, probably a teenager.
Well, you're old. You're older than I am.
Well, I know it.
And that's old.
He's an energetic
I thought the makeup would take so many years off us, but take a look, folks, it really doesn't.
He's an energetic young guy with a, he has a lot of passion. I also think he probably requires a good bit of attention. And I'm hopeful that, that the mayor's office, the mayor and Scott and them, will give him the attention he needs. I think he can also be a great ally. And he's on the Rules Committee. And they're going to need his help, I think, on some of these. I think the Rules Committee, in the, in both finance and rules. Finance, I think, is going to go and take a hard look at her staff and to pay the, you know, what she's paying them. I understand it's a little more than what Curry paid his people. But I think they're probably a lot better than Curry's people, so maybe it's worth it.
You know, to underscore what you said about Rockman, he called me when he was first going to, as a couple of them did, but he called me early on, and he said, you know, I'm going to win this race. And I asked him what the demographics were, and he said, Mike, let me tell you, I've, I've gone through the numbers. Let me tell you, I'm going to win this thing, and I really need your help up front. I mean, he was up front, and he went through numbers and statistics, and he said, this, what, that? And I'll be doggone. And I said, well, you know Alberta's in it, and then all that? And he said, I got it. Let me tell you, I'm going to tell you why it's in this precinct and that precinct. So to your point, let me tell you.
That's a Republican district, too.
It is, and he worked it. He, he, he worked it. He went out there and worked it. So you're absolutely right. When you talk about young, new young stars, when you think about the ones that got elected, they're all stars. What they've got to decide on is you've got this group that's now in charge, so to speak.